I will call to order. I will call to order our regularly scheduled monthly city council meeting on Monday, April the seventeenth, twenty twenty-three at approximately seven P M. Let the records reflect that all members of council are present along with our city administrator, Mrs. Seth Duncan. And our, uh, clerk to counsel, Miss Cindy Miller. And our junior partner from the law firm, our city attorney. Daniel Hughes, appreciate him being there. Compared to John, you're very young, but we got, we're good. Uh, glad to have you here. Also various department heads are in the audience alongside, so thank you for being here this evening. And as always, we welcome our public and we thank you for being here. And if I had to guess and take a bet, uh, I would imagine we're recognizing some of our youth and children. Because when this chamber is packed the way it is, they kids involved. So, thank you. Thank you for supporting the example you're setting and the things that they have done for us. And we'll get more into that a little bit later as we go along. Let me count up on my finger. I think we're still in April. Is that Mr. Reynolds? Good, like that. So I will, uh, now recognize Mr. Reynolds if he would, uh, do our invocation and our pledge of allegiance, please.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, if you'd bow with me. A gracious father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this beautiful weather, uh, that we had this day. We thank you for this time that we can come together, um, that we can do the business of the city. I pray that you'll give us ears to listen, mouths to speak smartly, um, and wisdom to, uh, do what's right and courageous. As we look out across the audience, Father, and just see all these youth, uh, I pray that, uh, we can just lift them up and, uh, that their paths be clear as they move forward and grow. And, and just look at the future citizens and future leaders of our cities and governments and businesses and families. Um, just pray to, uh, we just lift them up and, um, ask that you watch over them and protect them as they move on through life. Um, I pray especially for our firefighters and police officers, our military and our representatives. And as always, I pray that you ask us to, uh, that you guide us as we try to serve our constituents in your name, I pray. Amen.
Yeah.
Uh, please rise and say the prayers.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Next item on our agenda is proclamations and presentations, and that's one of the greatest honors that I have. And I'm going to head around out front there, uh, in order to do these. And also would ask our chair of, uh, recreation, Mr. Allgood, if you'd join me down front. Also asked if our, uh, director of recreation, Mr. Bark, come on under, would join us along with, uh, youth programs, Willie Stewart. They'll join us down front. Assistant Recreation Director Willie Stewart. Yeah. Oh, first thing I gotta do is read the proclamation, darling. All right. It is honored tonight to, uh, issue this proclamation, uh, recognizing, uh, this group of young ladies. Uh, whereas the twenty twenty-three twelve U Malden Girls Basketball Team won the twenty twenty-three S C A P twelve U Girls State Basketball Championship. Applause right there. All right. You ready? Here's another one. Whereas they swept through the bracket to bring home the championship. All right. Good job. Whereas this is their second straight championship. All right. Ms. King, you recognize a trend here that we send them on to the, uh, university in Columbia? Keep that undefeated trend going. All right. Yeah, if you know how much that hurt a Clemson fan to say that, but that was, good job. Uh, whereas the twelve U Malden Girls Basketball Team through hard work and dedication, won the state championship. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I Terry Merritt, Mayor of the City of Malden, along with my fellow council members, do hereby recognize them for winning the state championship.
So we're gonna bring up the coaches first. Bria Diller. Jazz Wideman. And Aaron Diller. Start with the ladies. Jada Aiken. London Dogan. Hallie Drummond. Reese Fabian. Tara Humbert. Delilah. Okay, I'm gonna mess his name up. They're looking here. I probably, I butchered the first part of Naomi Sack. Aries Samples. Alana Scott. Aubrey Smith. Caitlin Wright.
It's always a pleasure to do this because most of us up here remember Bart as our head coach as we went through the recreational program. All right. Proclamation. Whereas the twenty twenty-three Malden High School Girls Basketball Team won seventeen straight games for the class five A upper state championship at Bob Jones University. Whereas the girls' basketball team played against Stratford at USC Aiken for the program's first state title since nineteen fifty-seven. Whereas freshman guard Sarah LeMond scored twenty-four points and, did I mess that one up? Was it Lehman? Hey, second chance better. All right. Rebound that one. Sarah's Lehman scored twenty-four points and sophomore guard Trinity Jones got that one. All right. Scored twenty as the Mavericks held on for a sixty-two fifty-seven win over Stratford in the five A state championship game at the USC Aiken Convocation Center. Whereas the Malden High School Girls Basketball Team through hard work and dedication persevered and won the five A state championship. Yeah, all right. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I Terry Merritt, Mayor of the City of Malden, along with my fellow council members, do hereby recognize the twenty twenty-three Malden High School Girls Basketball Team for winning the five A state championship. Thank you, ladies. Beautiful.
All right, let's start with the coaches first. Head coach, Angel McGowan. Assistant coach, Ronnie Jones. Assistant coach, Deniqua Jenkins. I think I got it. And manager, Brooklyn Gamble. Now for the players. Ella Davenport. Kalen Gaskins. Janaya Norfus. Renaja Garrett. Uh, Janesha Burton. Ariana Teague. Trinity Jones. Delilah Saltis. Destiny Madison. Kalen Cloud. Gesaria Limon. Mani McIver. And Gesaria Jones.
Thank you for those staying once again, our state champions. Thank you. I got another proclamation here to do. Be good. You want to go to the presentation habitat? Okay. Next item on our agenda is a, uh, presentation by Habitat for Humanity.
Thank y'all. Thank you very much for inviting me, um, Councilman Mattney. Thank you for the invitation and, uh, for getting it set up. I appreciate it. Um, I just wanted to, uh, introduce, uh, a little bit of who we are and what we do. I think it's, uh, uh, important what we do. I may be a little bit biased, um, and, uh, but I wanted to share that with y'all. Uh, Habitat for Men in Greenville County was started in nineteen eighty-five, so we are getting close to our fortieth year here in Greenville County. Uh, Saturday morning, we start our four hundredth and eleventh, four hundred and eleventh home, um, over in, uh, the Nickel Town community, which is part of a twenty-nine home, uh, neighborhood that we're in the process of building over there right now. We're the largest habitat, uh, in South Carolina. All of our homeowners go through a two-hundred-hour, uh, sweat equity process. Thirty to forty of those hours are spent in class where they're learning how to budget. They're learning about predatory lending. They're learning how to do basic repair on their homes and being prepared to be good homeowners. Uh, so Habitat, we certainly don't give our homes away. Uh, they pay an affordable mortgage at the end of that two-hundred hours, and we make sure that they're prepared, uh, to be good homeowners. Uh, our foreclosure rate over the last of thirty-seven years or so is a little over three percent. We haven't had a foreclosure since, uh, twenty thirteen. Um, so I think our program speaks for itself in terms of how would, how they perform. Uh, typically our mortgages are paid on time at close to or above ninety percent. And, uh, I dare you to take that to any bank and see how they're doing with their mortgage portfolio compared to ours. So again, that's how we do it. Um, what we do, I kind of want to introduce, I would kind of want to introduce, uh, how we, how we operate in the context of Malden. A lot of good things going on here. I've had the opportunity to be up here before, uh, as a, as a representative habitat and also just as a, a citizen of Habitat or a citizen of Malden. I do live here, um, so, uh, glad to be here as well because of that. Um, you can see this diagram. It's really fancy and pretty and, and kind of explains everything we do. I won't spend a lot of time on, on it other than, uh, you know, I would encourage you, if you wanted to have a better understanding of exactly how our program works, you can see it there. It's very clearly, uh, uh, delineated. We have a homeownership program and also repair program, so we don't simply serve and, uh, maintain affordable homeownership just simply through building new homes. We also make sure that we maintain affordable housing stock through weatherization and repair projects. We've done several in the city of Malden. I've actually done a couple right over here, a block over from the city hall. Uh, did a roof, uh, uh, for the mother of a veteran, uh, and actually her husband was a veteran as well. It passed away. So that was, uh, that was about a year ago. I think we, we finished that project, so. Um, and then, and the next slide you'll see, uh, what I want to do is put this in the context of all the cool things going on in Malden. We got Bridgeway Station co- going in. I live in Ashmore Bridge Road, so I'm a little jealous. Long ride for me now. Um, uh, but we got that going on. Uh, the city manager was, uh, kind enough to help me with the numbers. There's about a thousand or so, uh, jobs expected to be generated out of that. We got the new downtown, uh, back up and going again, so there'll be more jobs, uh, created there as well. And, uh, primarily, most of those jobs are going to be in the hospitality industry. And so you can just see right here just the average wages for typical hospitality. Server's gonna make around fourteen twenty-nine. Baristas somewhere not high or mid-nines to maybe ten dollars an hour. And retail associates right now, these are, these are pretty new numbers and they're making about thirteen dollars an hour. Um, so if you, and so you can see that's what our wages are. If you see what's going on currently in Malden, the housing situation in Malden, these are, these are pretty up to date too. Over there on the left, you see the median home price right now in Malden is three, three hundred and twenty-two thousand, four hundred and three dollars. All the, everything that's going on in Greenville County, a lot of the good things that go on, a lot of the good things are happening in Malden. That's, does, that's, that's part of the effect, unintended consequences sometimes. Sometimes it's just that's what happens. Gentrification is something that happens. We don't see gentrification in, at Habitat as necessarily an evil thing. It, it depends on who gets the benefit from it. That, that's really important to us, but that's what's going on in Malden. Uh, so I just broke down the mortgage payments. You put five percent down, that's sixteen thousand that you're gonna have to put down. You're still gonna pay P M I, uh, for the first, first half of that mortgage. Uh, that'll be your mortgage payment of two thirty-eight or two thousand three eighty-seven and then two twenty-two fifty-nine after you're able to get P M I off of there. So you spend another almost sixteen thousand dollars on P M I. Uh, and I don't think there's many people that are walking around with the change in their pocket to put ten, ten percent down on a house that costs three hundred and twenty-two thousand if you do. Uh, I'd like to talk to you about donations later. Um. Average rent right now in Malden, uh, this is the lowest number I could find. Rent Cafe and Rent dot com show higher numbers, but this is the lowest one you can see for a one-bedroom apartment right now in Malden's two, twelve hundred and eighty-two dollars. Um, seems about right. I think if you go around and talk to people, that's, that's, that's about what they're, about what people are paying in this general area. Uh, and ninety-one percent of all rentals are in the one thousand to two thousand dollar range. Uh, that's for one and two bedroom only. I'm not going three and four and getting those numbers. So why do I tell you all that? Uh, because I want to show you, um, in slide five, I, I want to show you that if you break that down and we go back and we say, hey, you know, we've got about, let's say, out of those thousand dollars of Bridgeway Station, six hundred of those are gonna be, um, some sort of hospitality. And let's take the high end and say that, that, that hospitality is a waiter making about, on average, fifteen dollars an hour or fourteen and change an hour. They're gonna make twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars a year. That's their, that's their average income as a server. Um, that puts them right smack dab in the middle of fifty percent of A M I. That's, and that's not a hundred percent. A hundred percent A M I for Greenville County, right now, a person has to make fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and forty dollars. That's the average median income. That's what A M I is. So the average median income right now for a household of one is almost sixty thousand dollars. Our servers are making less than half of that. If you were to say, okay, HUD defines affordable homeownership or affordable housing cost as thirty percent or less of your income. So let's take it up to thirty percent for this server, and now they're gonna, they can't afford more than seven hundred and forty-three dollars. Well, we just went and looked at rent and we're five hundred, we're five hundred and dollars and change short for this person to rent a one-bedroom apartment right now. But we need them because they gotta work over there and we need them close by because otherwise we're gonna compete with Fountain Inn. We're gonna compete with Greenville. We're gonna compete with Brea. We're gonna compete with all these other cities that are doing the same things that we're doing right here. And, and so we need them close. We need them to be, we need that advantage. Um, and they can't afford to live here right now. So what I also showed you here is the average Habitat for Community Greenville County, of Greenville County, our average mortgage payment since twenty twenty, which it's gone up significantly since twenty twenty, seven hundred and six dollars. That's what that's grown. This is ownership. This isn't a rental. This is a, this is a, a three-bedroom, twelve to thirteen hundred square foot home, uh, as energy efficient as you could possibly build it. Um, so I wanted to, I think I have, do I have one more slide? Yeah, one more slide. So I, I say all this to say, how, how can you help? I, the one thing I want to challenge, I, and I challenge every, don't, don't feel singled out. I, I try to challenge all of our, our local leadership that affordable housing continues to be a top priority. Every poll you see, every, every time anything comes up about what needs to be dealt with or what needs to be addressed in our, in our cities and our towns and our, in the upstate, affordable housing is at or near the top. Um, and so we need help. We can't do it alone. Um, and so these are some different ways. One of the big ways is land. Land is a really, really, um, really difficult thing for us to get right now because now we're competing with everyone else, all these developers coming in from all over the country, uh, coming in and buying these properties up. Uh, we have to, we have to buy our property too. If it's not given to us, we have to buy it and go out in the open market. And so that, that lowers the amount of houses we can build if we're spending, uh, forty, fifty, sixty thousand dollars a lot on land. And so, uh, uh, some cities, and I haven't really looked, to be honest with you, what Malden's got on their books. Some cities have more than others. Some cities do a good job of keeping it off their books because that's what they want. Some cities hold on to a lot. So I'd challenge you, maybe go back and look at what lots you have. There's a lot of, not anymore, but there used to be a lot of ghost lots, a lot of ghost property. Uh, started, uh, you know, some, uh, someone started a build there, someone started a development or someone started something and it's, it's, it's not happening anymore. Again, that, you don't see that quite as much these days. Um, another thing that we would, that we, we would love to partner more with municipalities on is land trusts. Land trusts actually do two things for us. They drive down the affordable, they drive down the cost and make it more affordable because if the land is held in trust, the, the homeowner gets the opportunity to own the prop, own the building, own the improvement, but not the land. The land stays in the trust, keeps it, it keeps it affordable basically in perpetuity, but allows the family to continue to, to generate equity. Um, so those are some of the other, so some of the other things that I have up there, uh, are introductions. Maybe you don't have land. That's okay. You guys have builders and developers coming to you every single day, and they're asking you for all these different projects. Uh, like I said, I live in Ashmore Bridge Road. My last count, I got thirteen hundred homes in different areas, uh, different stages of construction within three miles of my house. It's, there's a lot going on. And when these guys And when these guys come to you and they ask, hey, we want to do this or want to do that, there's a great opportunity. If you say, sure, why don't you come talk to our friends here at Habitat? Maybe we can work something out where we, we designate something here. Maybe you have a part of this property. We had this with creative builders over in Berea. They had a part of their property that they couldn't put another unit on of, of apartment complexes, and they gave that to us, and there'll be nine affordable homes going on there that'll be homeownership. So there's, there's lots of different ways. Maybe it's an introduction. You know, I know people don't like to talk about tax abatements and things like that because that starts affecting the bottom line, but there are a lot of different ways where cities have accomplished that, that have been pretty, pretty significant. Our, our homeowners' average escrow in the last year went up a hundred dollars a month. And so what that means to Habitat, because we hold the mortgages, is that's a hundred dollars less per mortgage that we don't get in revenue. We rely on that mortgage revenue to continue to do what we do. Well, what fifteen homes this past year, that cost us half a million dollars because of the taxes and escrow going up a hundred dollars per, per build. So it's significant. Another thing is fee reductions. If we were able, if we were able to get our, even some of the fees waived, whether it was permitting fees or things like that, between all the different municipalities that we work in in Greenville County, we could build an extra house easily. It cost us that much. And so those are, those are some of the ways. Again, I just want, I want to thank you for your time. I think Habitat is really important to our community. I think we can do a lot to continue to help communities grow in a healthy way and make sure that everyone that, that lives and serves us, the people that are giving us our food, the people that are taking care of, taking care of our aunts and uncles and grandparents and hospitals and things like that, have a place to live in our community and be a part of it. So again, I thank you for your time, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Hunter? Mr. Matty?
It's not a question, just, just a couple of comments. I want to thank Mark for being here tonight and for what Habitat does in the community, not just in Malden, but in Greenville County. You know, we've got, projections are showing roughly two hundred and fifty thousand people are going to be moving to Greenville County over the next twenty years, and they're, they're going to have to have a place to work. And when we talk about workforce housing, it's because we have to have a place to house our workforce. We have to have the house for our teachers, our firefighters, our police officers, our EMTs, our nurses. These are people who are working ridiculous hours. And, and, you know, I think that we have an opportunity to provide better locations for, for them to live in our city and then throughout Greenville County. Thank you, Mark, for what you do.
Thanks, sir. Thank you.
Oh, and one more thing, Mayor. There's currently a bill going through the General Assembly that would allow municipalities that collect hospitality taxes to use a portion of that taxes for workforce housing. So as that works through the General Assembly, there might be an opportunity down the road for us not to just use the things that we normally use H-Tax for, but to make some investments for our workforce as well.
Good job. Good. Thank you, Mr. Mattney. Anyone else?
Thank you, sir. Just a, part of the good news, if I may, there is the fact that we've been partnering with GCRA for years, and a Lehe place came on board with forty-two workforce-directed apartments there. The sixteen duplexes on Old Mill and Miller Road came on board also. We've got over across three eighty-five behind Spinks, we've got seventy-plus units currently renting or leasing for workforce housing. Just to the right of that, there's another eighty units planned for workforce housing. Further out east, Butler Road, past Lawrence Electric, there's another plot of land there that's currently being looked at. They will house another mid-seventy apartment units for workforce housing. So we are active, and we do that way. Habitat is unique in the fact they direct toward homeownership. And anyone that's owned their own home knows what that means. That's significantly a better feeling than just renting an apartment. Nothing against renting an apartment, but just the feeling you have of owning your own home. So I applaud them and have been, been involved in two or three wall-raising projects through our church that did Habitat homes. Actually, ended up, they were in the Simpson Hill area, but that's okay. We helped them out also. So we are actively pursuing that, but there's always opportunities to do more. We won't run out of that. Thank you. Anything else? Let me also take a moment. I just noticed an old friend of many of ours who has returned to our chamber, Mr. Tommy Shaluli. Thank you, sir, for being back, sitting right next to Phil Cuthbert, and so we're welcoming him back also. So thank you, guys, for being here. And as always, our local vet, Dr. McPhail. Thank you, sir, for being here also. So appreciate that. Thanks for allowing me that little deviation from the agenda. Next item on the agenda is another proclamation, National Day of Prayer. Whereas America needs a moral rebirth, and nearly ever problem facing our nation today springs from a moral base, and whereas we need to implore God's blessings on our country, and whereas we need to ask God to forgive our sinfulness and restore our moral perspective, and whereas we ask that our citizens be reminded of Second Chronicles seven fourteen, "If my people who are called on by my name shall humble themselves and pray and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, then I would hear from heaven and will forgive their sins and will heal their land." Now therefore, I, Terry Merritt, Mayor of the City of Malden, do hereby proclaim Thursday, May fourth, 2023, as a national day of prayer in the city of Malden, and urge our citizens to join the millions of other Americans across the nation in praying for a moral rebirth in America. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is a reading and approval of minutes for the city council meeting of March twenty twenty twenty-three. You should have those in your packet and had an opportunity to look at those. Are there any corrections, clarifications, adjustments needed? Here none, if this is agreeable by unanimous consent, we'll approve the minutes of March twenty twenty twenty-three. Any objections? Here none, they stand approved. Next item is our first public comment. This comment period is reserved for items on the agenda tonight. Before us, I do not see anyone. Ms. Smith would speak at the second comment period, if you would, please, and we'll hold until then. Next report from our city administrator, Mr. Duncan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Got a few items for council and the public tonight. First, I want to start off with talking about some of the cultural events that we have coming up at our cultural center this spring. So as we all know, spring is finally right around the corner, it seems. And so with that, we've got several items. Malden City Singers will present Songs of Faith and Recognition of the Spring Season this coming weekend. Show times are Saturday, April twenty-second at three P.M. and seven P.M., and on Sunday, April twenty-third at three P.M. Tickets are available online at maldenculturalcenter.org. Music will feature Anthony Harris with the Rocky Creek Missionary Baptist Church Choir, and tickets are going fast. Next up, and next weekend, we have the Malden Blues and Jazz Festival, Saturday, April twenty-ninth, between two P.M. and nine P.M. Music lineup includes Lilian Rose Cuban Jazz Band at two P.M., Mac Arnold and Plateful of Blues at three thirty, the Jazzville, excuse me, the Greenville Jazz Collective at five fifteen, and Albert Cummings at seven thirty P.M. to round out our evening. Parking and entry are free. We encourage folks to bring lawn chairs and blankets, and we ask that they leave outside food and beverages at home because we will have food trucks and beverages there on site for purchase. Lease dogs are allowed at the event, but we ask that people please refrain from smoking, bringing their skateboards and bicycles to the festival as well. Next up after that, we have Love's Labor Lost, presented by MCC Shakespeare. Will perform three nights, starting May fifth, at the city's amphitheater. Show times are at six thirty P.M. Friday, Saturday, and Sunday that weekend. Love's Labor's Lost is a Shakespearean story of love and faith. The show is free to the public, so come on out. And last up from the Malden Cultural Center, we have You're a Good Man Charlie Brown coming here in just a few weeks. Tickets are on sale now for the show at the Malden Cultural Center in May. The show will run May twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, June third and June fourth. Directed by Mia Phillips, Charlie Brown, and the entire Peanuts gang explore life's greatest questions that they play baseball, struggle with homework, sing songs, swoon over their crushes, and celebrate the joy of friendship. We hope everyone gets a ticket for that. Next up, I do want to make council aware that we're going to be celebrating some of our employees this week with some anniversaries, acknowledging milestones that they've achieved here with the city. Those being recognized for five-year service awards includes Jason Rogers, Katie Allen, Lucas Kramer, Julie Patton, James Browning, and Mark Putnam. For ten years of service, we have Gary Kraus, Willie Stewart, Christian Hodrea. For fifteen years of service, we have Misty Ross, Ollie Abercrombie, Toby Padgett, and James Alfred. Twenty years of service, Mr. John Vickers. Twenty-five years of service, Chief Brian McHone down there. Okay, all right. And then for thirty years of service, Mr. Willie Garmble. So we're excited about that. And no, not last, I got two more items real quick. One, I wanted to take a moment to announce that Malden Fire Department has received the Fire Safe South Carolina Community Designation, Fire Safe South Carolina, for their active participation in developing community risk reduction plans for our jurisdiction in 2022. Malden FD is among one hundred and thirty-two designated communities that continually work to reduce fire-related injuries in our state, thereby decreasing the risk for residents and firefighters. They also promote consistent fire safety messaging and stress the importance of providing all relative data collected at fire scenes. To earn the safe, excuse me, Fire Safe South Carolina designation, fire departments completed courses to improve data quality, trained community partners to deliver in-home safety visits, and further develop their skills through online National Fire Academy courses in risk reduction and assessment. Congratulations to Chief McHone and all the men and women of the Malden Fire Department on this designation. And then lastly, tonight, I do want to introduce to the public, although they can't see her virtually, but Ms. Lauren Carter, if you'll stand up, take a bow. Ms. Carter is our new communications manager, who serves in our public information role, our marketing communication strategist, and also handles our press release and all media inquiries and things like that. We're very excited to have her on board. This is her third week, so she came back not one, but two, now three weeks running. Excited to have her. She's done a fantastic job. We had a press release go out last week, and saw some really great media buy-in from that and some earned media from that. Also, she's put together some great posts online that have just been tearing up social media right now, especially with Maverick Biscuits, having a reach of more than a hundred thousand views across the area, which is just phenomenal. So we're excited for her and for what she's doing to help make sure we get the word out about all the great things going on in Malden. And thank you, Lauren. All right, and that's my report for tonight. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Seth. Also, my congratulations to Lauren. She stepped up to the plate today. We had several interviews from local TV stations about our Maverick Yards announcement with Drew Parker, and she came up with great talking points and stood in front of the camera, and I moved my mouth with her words. It turned out real good. So please find those on Channel Four. I think they were at four thirty-five and six, so you missed them if you didn't, but Fox Carolina Tonight at ten A, ten P.M. Stay up for that. And Ms. Kennedy Harris, I think, will be doing that spot. So well-received, everything we talked to those two different teams, they were excited to hear, and we did it on-site, so they saw that, and it turned out well. And Dr. McPhail offered water as needed, as well as a bathroom if they needed it. So hospitality was there also, which reflects what Malden's all about in our community. So thank you, Lauren, for everything that you did this afternoon quickly. So thank you. Yeah. Next item is report from standing committees. Finance and Policy, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only item I have for this evening is our next budget workshop, which is scheduled for the twenty-seventh, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, sir. Public Safety, Ms. King.
Mr. Duncan did a fine job of recognizing the fire department, so that was on my list. So I will pass at this time. Nothing to report, Mayor.
How's our fire station coming?
It's a comment. It's looking great.
Oh, it looks good.
Yep.
Fantastic. I drove by there the other day, and it's impressive from the outside. I had one of our local citizens say, what's that Taj Mahal you building on West Butler? I said, that's a fire station. Proud of that. Thank you, Ms. King. Public Works, Mr. Craylon.
I'll report this time.
Thank you, sir. Economic Plan and Development, Mr. Mattney.
Nothing other than taking a point of personal interest to wish my colleague, Ms. King, happy birthday.
Oh, that's right. Good, thank you for doing that. She's slowly catching up to you. No, she's setting the bar higher for you, isn't she?
Twenty-one.
Oh, okay. Yeah, got you.
Loving Mr. Mattney more every day.
Yes, well, he is good with the English language. Know that. Building Codes, Ms. Kuzner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last month, the permits and inspections were up from February, and we had seventeen new businesses open. Thank you.
Thank you. Recreation, Mr. Allgood.
Thank you, Mayor. Winning conferences are tough. Winning regions is even tougher. Winning two-state championships is awesome. So we heard that this evening. That's all I have to report.
Thank you, sir. Next item, unfinished business, there is none. New business ordinance, first reading, none. Ordinance ten fifteen, Jenkins Court, Ms. Miller.
Council has requested to consider first reading of an ordinance for the sale of property along Jenkins Court to McPhail Revocable Trust.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. That comes out of economic development. Mr. Mattney.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion from Mr. Mattney. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Allgood. Any discussion? Here none. All those in favor of the motion to consider first reading ordinance for the sale of property along Jenkins Court to McPhail Revocable Trust, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here none, motion is unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Miller. Back to you.
Council has requested to approve the ordinance agreement and supplement for MASC Local Revenue Service Programs.
Ms. Miller, that's coming out of finance. Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This has to do with your Local Revenue Services Programs. This is just a housekeeping item for our ordinance, and it's really just to make sure we're on the same page with the municipal association as they collectively collect taxes on our behalf. So all that said, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the ordinance agreement and partisement program supplemental agreement in our packet.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. King. Any discussion? All, all those in favor of the motion to approve the ordinance agreement and supplement for Local Revenue Services Program in your packet, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Here none, the motion carries unanimous. Do you have anything for that one, Ms. Miller, or does it go straight to finance?
I can read it. That's fine. I can, I can read it.
Okay, back to you then.
Council has requested to move forward with the recommendations made by Evergreen Solutions concerning the 2022 comp and class study.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This came out of committee unanimously with a three-oh vote to bring it here tonight. As you all know, this came, is coming out of the Evergreen Solution Comp and Class Plan Comp and Class Plan that this council committed to last year and received information earlier part of this year. After receiving that information and after looking at this current budget year and the shape the city's in, Mr. Putnam, as well as our administrator, thought it wise to look and say, if this is something that the city would like to move forward, that we need to get it in committee. And we did, and it came out with a 3-0 vote. So with that said, I'd like to make a motion to follow the recommendations from Evergreen Solutions, which is the hybrid parity proposal that would ensure the city's pay rates are brought in line with market rates. This is listed in your packet, so I won't go through each line item, but I'll do the three highlights there if we don't mind. So it was the parity proposal. This would also increase starting pay for police officers to $45,000, and for firefighters to $42,000. It would also increase all sports center part-time employees from $10 an hour to $11 an hour. The implementation of this will cost roughly $551,000. So I'd like to make that in the form of a motion to move forward with this plan.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. King.
Second.
Surprised she didn't want to make a motion. Any discussion? As I understand this, tonight, if this motion carries, it would be implemented ASAP, current.
April 28, Mr. Mayor. That's correct. On April 28 checks for current employees.
Fantastic. Beautiful. Good job. Thank you. Any other discussion? Here none. All those in favor of the motion to accept Evergreen Solutions for the hybrid parity proposal for our Comp and Class Study implemented currently, say aye.
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 Those opposed, like sign. Here none. The motion is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're clapping to muscles. Thank you.
Good deal. Next item, Senior Center Roof, Ms. Miller.
Council is requested to authorize the execution of a contract between the City of Malden and Guy Roofing for the replacement of the roof on the Sports Center complex.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Coming out of Recreation, Mr. Krailin.
Yes. At this time, I'd like to make a motion for the City Council to approve the contract with Guy Roofing for $129,900 and authorize the city administrator to approve necessary changes, change orders up to $150,000.
150 is the aggregate, right?
Correct.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed, yes.
Love it. Thank you very much. Is there a second for the motion?
Second.
Second from Ms. King. Any discussion? Here none. All those in favor of the motion to award the contract to Guy Roofing and authorize the city administrator to approve any or all change orders up to not to exceed $150,000, say aye.
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 Those opposed, like sign. Here none. The motion carries unanimous. Thank you. Let's see. Next item, community hold none. Now we're back to the second public comment. Ms. Smith, you would come to the podium, please, and state your name and address? Let me hold on. Is the microphone got a green light on it? Did you press the little button? My bad. Thank you.
Sorry. My name is Christy Smith. My address is 102 Sanderling Drive, Greenville. Good evening, members of the Malden City Council, and thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Christy Smith. I'm here on behalf of the Forrester Woods Estates HOA Board to address a pressing issue in Forrester Woods Estates. Forrester Woods Estates is a wonderful, well-established neighborhood that's been experiencing growing turnover with young families replacing an aging population. However, we are here today to address a growing concern that affects the safety of our residents, particularly those who are elderly or children. A speed study was performed in our neighborhood in the fall of 2021 and showed that the speeds did not warrant traffic calming measures. However, we believe that this study underestimates the average speed in our neighborhood. We have ample evidence to show that when alerted by radar signs, speeders will slow down up to 80% of the time. Additionally, average speed reductions are typically between 10 and 20%. The issue of speeding in our neighborhood is not just a matter of inconvenience, but it poses a significant danger to the residents of Forrester Woods Estates. Studies show that when pedestrians are struck by a vehicle at 40 miles an hour, there is a 10% chance of survival. At 20 miles an hour, there is a 90% chance of survival. Unfortunately, there is an issue of limited sight distance in our neighborhood, as well as a large and increasing number of small children. Two large brick mailboxes and a light post have been decimated in the past year. We cannot continue to ignore the potential danger to our residents. Just imagine if those had been small children. We have also witnessed an increasing number of reckless teenagers driving in our neighborhood. In the past month, they've been observed doing burnouts in the cul-de-sac, driving in excess of 50 miles an hour. And just last weekend, two cars were observed racing each other backwards up Sanderling Drive. By the time the police department is called, most of the residents don't bother to call because they'll be gone. We're here to ask for help from the Malden Police Department and City Council to make an exception to the traffic calming study or help us find another solution. Instead of being told what cannot be done, we hope that you will work with us to find a solution that ensures the safety of our residents. In conclusion, we ask for your help in addressing this pressing issue. The safety of our residents is one of the utmost importance, and we believe that with your help, we can find a solution that ensures the safety of our neighborhood. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Does council have any questions for Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Smith, so does the HOA, have they, excuse me, have they talked to all the residents to see if they would be okay with speed humps being put in?
We have a, we would prefer stop signs. I was told earlier today that adding additional stop signs just along the road, just to make things a little bit more convenient for residents and for first responders to be able to get to the neighborhood. I was told that stop signs are not a lack or it's not an option. But yeah, we've had, we have about 80% of the residents on Sanderling Drive have already signed a petition towards the stop signs, but would also agree to speed humps being put in as well.
Okay. I just think that sometimes people think stop signs are just a suggestion, so...
I agree. And I feel like they probably would roll the stop signs, but I would rather them roll stop signs than be street racing down the road.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Next item is a call for executive session. Would this be BDS or Finance? Which one? Or just? Finance. Do you like to throw you under the bus?
Sure, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session to receive legal advice regarding business license appeal as allowed by State Statute Section 30-40-70A2.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Kuzner. Any discussion? Here none. All those in favor of the move into executive session, say aye.
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 Those opposed, like sign. Here none. We will stand, not really dismiss, but we will stand to go to the executive session upstairs in the conference room at approximately 7:55 PM. For those in the audience who want to hang around, we'll be back shortly, but... We are reconvening back into chambers approximately 8:30 PM. Would somebody like to report out from executive session?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to report out of executive session where we received legal advice regarding a business license appeal. No reports were made, or no votes were taken, and no decisions were made.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Possible action on items discussed in that session. Anyone have anything? Here none. The next item is council concerns. Any council concerns? Here none. The one that you're on adjourned.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Ms. King. Motion by Mr. Matty. Second, Ms. King. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, like sign. Here none. We stand adjourned at 8:31.